Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the next President of the United States, Donald J. Trump.
That is so nice. Thank you, thank you. Wow. You know, and I say it, the silent majority is back. We really are in a position that we haven't been in in a long time. The people are speaking. It's an amazing thing. It's like a movement. And this is happening, and so many other things on Friday, I'm going to be in Alabama. And it was going to be 500 people, and the room held about 1,000, and they heard that we were there. And within about two minutes, that room wasn't big enough. So they went to a room that held 2,000 people, and they heard that wasn't big enough. And now, they went to the convention center, and they heard that wasn't big enough. They're gonna end up being 30,000 to 40,000 people in Alabama. And New Hampshire's been so amazing. I mean, the relationship I've developed with so many people, even in the room, has been incredible people. Somebody said, I left New York, they said, "What do they like in New Hampshire?" I said, "You know what they're like? They're hard-working people that love the country." That's what they're like. And you know, right down the road, thank you, right down the road, we have Jeb. Very small crowd. We have 2,500. You have the best real estate, by the way. You have the best real estate. There are other rooms, the overflow rooms all over this building, they have closed-circuit television, there are people outside with speakers. So I give you credit, and to the other folks, I have to say, we love you equally as much, but the next time, you're gonna get here a little bit earlier, right? Something like that. But you know, I look at what's wrong with even our party. And the other day, and I say it very strongly, I heard that Jeb Bush, that Marco Rubio, that Governor Walker. Who, who? That's what they're saying, "Who?" They're gonna spend a huge amount of money on fighting Trump. And I say, "I think that's okay. Does it matter? Haven't you sort of heard everything already? It's like, sort of, like, getting boring." But Jeb has $114 million. The others have a lot. Hillary has 60. I think Hillary's in big trouble, by the way, folks. So I heard the other day that the three of them are gonna spend a lot of money on negative ads about me. So I think, you know, you can listen, listen, you're fired, but I just heard it. They said they're gonna spend... I love these rowdy crowds. Isn't it great? Their spirit. Their spirit. You know what? I'll tell you what. You know what's happening to Jeb's crowd, as you know, right down the street? They're sleeping. They're sleeping now. But you know, I saw that Jeb made a statement, and I wrote it down because I couldn't even believe it. We're talking about Iraq, okay? Now, we're in for $2 trillion. Thousands of lives, thousands. Great people, great people. Wounded warriors who are the best. And we love our wounded warriors. They're wounded warriors. They're great warriors. And they're all over. We love them. They're all over. And Jeb made the statement about the possibility of going back into Iraq. He said, I give you the exact quote. "The Iraqis want our help." We don't even know if there is an Iraq. Every time a bullet's fired, they run. They leave our Humvees, they drop the equipment. You know, the enemy has our best equipment. We have the old stuff. So he said, "The Iraqis want our help." Now, listen to this. This is after all we've spent. "They want to know that we have skin in the game." Can you believe it? After years of fighting unsuccessfully because of the way we fight, I mean, we should... Can you believe "skin in the game"? And I thought that was incredibly dumb. As dumb as on immigration, an act of love. It's an act of love when they come in. It's an act of love. Or a belief in Common Core. And the reason I talk about Jeb is, you know, he was supposed to do well in New Hampshire. He's, you know, going down like a rock. But how the hell does he do... How does he do well? Between Common Core, which he desperately wants, that means your children are gonna be educated by the bureaucrats in Washington. I think New Hampshire wants to educate their children locally. Do we agree with that? Do we agree? So our problem is... What's that? Oh, my group. These are my people. I don't mind if you shout out. Be careful with your language, because you're on about seven live broadcasts tonight. But you know, the problem we have is we don't, as a country, we don't have victories anymore. We don't have victories. When was the last time we had a victory? We make this horrible deal with Iran, which is a disgrace. And by the way, could be one of the worst deals, you know, depending on what ultimately happens. It could be, it could go down as one of the worst deals in history. Because it's going to, in my opinion, you'll have nuclear proliferation all over the Middle East and maybe beyond. You're gonna see things that you've never seen before. You know, the deal, not only the 24-day deal, the 24 days, how about this? You have 24 days, but you know, before the clock starts ticking, it's a long process before you get to day one. Nobody knows that. Well, "bring 'em home" is right. In many ways, "bring 'em home." But in one way, and I'm the first one, if you look at July of 2004, Reuters. Reuters is here. They're all here. They're all over the place. Look at these people. They're all over the place. But if you look at Reuters, July of 2004, you're going to see Trump say, and by the way, before I say it, "I believe more strongly in the military and military strength than anybody running by a factor of a billion." And in the recent big CNN poll that was just, just came out yesterday, they said, "In terms of the economy and jobs, Trump is like, forget it, so far ahead, many, many times ahead." And I was so happy to see, in terms of security and ISIS, I was way ahead of everybody else. Because I think, you know, we all know I'm gonna do a good job. I'm taking the jobs back from China. I'm taking the jobs back from Japan. I'm taking the jobs back from Mexico. You know who's moving to Mexico? Who likes Oreos? Does anybody like Oreos? We all do, right? Nabisco, Nabisco is leaving Chicago, and they're moving a big plant to Mexico. I don't like Oreos anymore, okay? No, but seriously, Nabisco. I mean, there's an American company. Ford, I tell it all the time with Ford, $2.5 billion they're spending on a car plant in Mexico. Now, they'll make cars, they'll put them into our country, no tax, no nothing. How do we benefit? I went to the Wharton School of Finance, you know, like, like, really smart people go to the Wharton School of Finance, I would tell you. I'm trying to figure out, who was the person that said it's good for us to have our companies building plants in Mexico where they make cars and they sell them to us and other people, perhaps? How does that help us? And I actually gave them a great idea, and you've probably heard this, because I've used it a couple of times. We have the illegals drive the cars over the border. You save a fortune. Is that correct? No tax, no nothing. No, no, they come in with no tax. And with me, we're not gonna let our companies go. We're not gonna let them go. We want cars to be made, in all fairness, in America, or even Michigan. Do we agree? I was at Michigan, right? It's okay. I mean, we're in New Hampshire, but Michigan would be fine. We're all happy with that. You'd rather have it in New Hampshire, right? But let's let Michigan have some of their factories back for the cars. But they're taking our jobs. And by the way, not just China and Japan. I was in Los Angeles. I saw ships, the biggest ships I've ever seen, with cars. They just keep rolling off, rolling off. You know what we give Japan? Beef. We give them wheat. Wheat. It's not quite a good deal. You know, if you look at the numbers, they're up here, we're down here, with everybody. I don't blame Japan. I don't blame Mexico. I don't blame China. And I say it all the time. Their leaders are much smarter and sharper and more cunning. You know, the word "cunning" is important. But they're more cunning than our leaders. Our leaders are babies, but more than anything else. They're politicians. Very good, thank you. I love that word. You know, I had to fill out a form. I was at jury duty the other day. Did you see it? I was at jury duty. And I enjoyed it, and actually, it was a great experience, but I had to fill out a form, and they said, "Profession." It was a line. It said, "What profession? What's your profession?" And I said, "I refuse to say I'm a politician. I can't say it." So if you people don't mind, you know what I did? I put "real estate," okay? I couldn't say, I just couldn't say, these politicians, "Oh, I can't take them." Now, I've dealt with them all my life. I've dealt with them all my life. And just remember, and it's very important, all of this money that I was talking about a little while ago, all of that money comes from my friends, guys that I know. I used to be one of them. I know the system better than anybody. All of that money that's going to Hillary, and Jeb, and Scott, and Marco, and all of them. The people that are putting up that money are, it's like puppets. Bing, bing. You saw that. They had it on Jimmy Fallon. "I better not do it anymore." The bing, bing, bang, bang, boom. I was imitating puppets, and I said, "Maybe I shouldn't do that anymore." But it's true. They're totally controlled, totally controlled by special interests, lobbyists, and donors. They're totally. And those people, I mean, actually, they do like me. You know, those people, they're friends of mine in many cases. In some cases, they're enemies. Some of them are terrible people, but I know them, but I know them all. You know, I see the Hamptons, and on Fifth Avenue, and Park Avenue, and all these great locations, they're having parties. Well, when a guy gives a million dollars, and much more than that, you know, some give much more, but do you think they're talking about like, nothing? They're talking turkey. They're talking lots of different things. And with me, I don't need anybody's money. I don't want anybody's money. Now, with that being said, I have to say, people are sending in money. One woman, one woman sent in $7.24. And you know what? She wrote me a two-page letter, and I actually read it for the... You know, the guys that wanna give me a million, I said, "Oh, forget it. Who cares?" You know, I know these guys. They're not good people, but yeah, some of them are okay. But the woman writes me a beautiful letter, how she wants to see their country, who's 84 years old, how she wants to see our country. Another one sent me $17, and $22, and, and you know, it's really an amazing thing. And I love that in a way, because it's like, they're investing, it's not gonna mean much in terms of dollars, but they're investing in the campaign. They're investing it with their heart. They're not saying, "You have to give me an ambassadorship. You have to do something bad for the country. You have to let Ford go into Mexico. You have to approve the Nabisco deal. You have to do..." All of this stuff, it's all deals. It's all deals, and it's not good. Thank you. And it's not good, and we gotta stop it. We gotta stop it. So we're gonna take some questions, you know? Thank you. We're gonna take some questions. I'll tell you what. So this was a town hall. They call it a town hall. I never saw a town hall with 2,500 people sitting in the theater. But we're gonna call it a town hall, right? But we are gonna work really hard, and you know, everybody said, "He's never gonna run." You remember that, right? "Never gonna run." Then they said, "Ah, but he's never gonna file his papers." Not the financial papers. I had to sign my life away with one page. You know, it says, "You're signing your life away." They'll say, "Oh, he'll never sign that." Then I signed that. They said, "Wow, well, he announced he's running. We had the event. Now he signed the paper." Then they're gonna say, then they did say, "He's never gonna file his financial document." Because he's probably not as rich as people think, right? So then I filed 90, I think it's 98 or 102 pages of financial. And it was much, much bigger than anybody anticipated. Actually, I wanted to file the financials, because, you know, I'm sort of a bragger, you know? I knew that... No, I actually wanted to. People didn't know. You know, I'm a private company. They don't know. These people are analyzing. One of them analyzed, "He's only worth $3 billion, but we haven't been able to look at about 200 of his corporations." I said, "Well, how do you figure we're worth that?" I mean, it's amazing. So I filed the papers, and they were spectacular. And I did a great job. And the reason I tell you that is not to say I did a great job. It's to say that we need somebody with that mentality to straighten out our country. We can't have... We can't have, we just can't have these people that don't know what they're doing on all of these... Yes, as an example, I call Carl Icahn, who's a great guy. Now, people, some people won't like him. Maybe some people don't think he's a nice person. Who cares, right? Do you want a nice person? We got plenty of ni... We got too many nice people. I want people, but Carl is a brilliant businessman, made a fortune. I said, "Carl, I'd love you to do me a favor. If I pull this off, and if I get in, I wanna make the country so strong financially." Because, you know, some people say, "It sounds crass." I had one person, I said, "We're gonna make the country rich again, and then we're gonna make the country great again." The person said, "Mr. Trump, that sounds so crass." I said, "What's crass? Rich." I said, "We gotta be rich to make it great. We're right now a debtor nation. We owe $18 trillion. It's gonna go up to $20 trillion, $21, $22, $24 is like the magic number that's a disaster." And we're going there. You know that. And we need, we need, it won't be long, we need this kind of mentality to make great deals. You know, an example, it's not financial, but it's the same thinking. The Iran deal, we all know about it. Everybody's talking about it. Everybody thinks it's bad. It's so bad. It's so bad. But take Sergeant Bergdahl. Does anybody remember that name? So, so, this is the way we think. So we get a traitor named Bergdahl, a dirty, rotten traitor. Who, by the way, when he deserted, six young, beautiful people were killed trying to find him, right? And you don't even hear about him anymore. Somebody said the other day, "Well, he had some psychological problems." Well, you know, you know, in the old days, bing, bong. When we were strong, when we were strong. So we get Bergdahl, a traitor, and they get five of the people that they most wanted anywhere in the world, five killers that are right now back on the battlefield, doing a job. That's the kind of deals we make. That's the kind of deals we make, right? Am I right? Six men died. That's right. Oh, probably more than that. They probably don't... And you know the amazing thing. I said, "Well, you know what? First of all, you should, you can't do those trades. Those trades are no good to start off with. Those trades are no good. You can't do them." But they knew, because the Colonel and the General went to see the people that knew Bergdahl, they knew he was a traitor before they made the deal. So I said to myself, "Who would make these deals? Who would do it?" But that's what we have running our country. We have people, we have people that are stupid. We have people that do not have our best interests at heart. They do not have our best interests at heart. I mean, how they can allow some of these things to happen is incredible. So we'll talk about it tonight, and I have a long time... You know, they have a huge problem at LaGuardia, so I can stay with you people as long as you want, all right? Okay? So let's take a few questions, or a lot of questions, and we have microphones out in the audience, and this is really a great facility, and I want to thank the people for making it available, because this is really a great facility. Okay, where are your mics? Where are your mics? Where are those microphones? You got them? Okay, it's someplace over here. Ma'am, yes, ma'am, go ahead. Okay? Oh, the young man wants to ask a question. Go ahead. You go first. We'll get you second. Go ahead, take the mic. You can ask any question you want. Miserable, vicious, horrible. Go ahead. Hand her the mic. Why don't you hand her the mic?
Well, she says she has to hold it.
Explain that one to me. Go ahead.
Wouldn't you say that President Obama's hubris has gotten him in a lot of trouble? Wouldn't you agree with that?
Well, I would say, something's gotten him in trouble, because we're certainly not doing very well. You know, we have 93 million people in this country that don't have a job. We have 93 million, and then you hear, "We have a 5.4% unemployment." We don't have a... We could have, you know, a report came out the other day, said it could be 42%, but let's say, I've been saying it's 20, 21%, but that's a real number. If you stop looking for a job, you're considered, essentially, statistically, you're considered employed. How many people have given up? And then I see this phony report, 5.4%, and you have 93 million people out of work. Uh, go ahead. I, I, look, I don't even wanna talk about it. When you talk about Obama, I, I think he cares. I know he cares. He must care. Does he care, folks? Tell me. I thought you might say that. Go ahead.
Well, here's my worry...
I think he does care.
Here's my concern, is that people say that you have a bit of hubris as well. I don't think I'm speaking out of line there.
Right, that's okay.
But how are you gonna get people who are tired of that kind of stuff to...
Well, I think we're very opposite people, though. I do think we're opposite.
But how are you gonna get them to vote for you?
I know. Well, you know, it could be that that doesn't... Yeah, it could be that doesn't happen. I mean, hey, look, I'm putting myself out there. It takes guts to run for president, and even these other guys, it does. You know, I've always heard that if you're very successful, you cannot run for political office, and especially, you can't run for president. And I never really got it, but now I get it. I mean, I get attacked every day so viciously by the press, which is, you know, largely dishonest. I have to be honest with you. No, I mean, they're largely dishonest. And in all fairness, no, no, I mean, I've, I've had some incredible, and some, I've met some really talented political reporters, but there's a lot of dishonesty going on, and purposely going on, and you really wonder what's going on. But it takes courage to run for president. And I would say this, for the politicians that run, probably not so much. That's what they do. They run, they lose, they win, they run, they keep... But for a person to come out of the private sector, especially somebody that really has had great achievement, John McLaughlin, the McLaughlin reporter, he's a good guy. He said the other day, he was arguing with one of the people on the panel, he said, "I don't understand you." He said, "This is a man of great accomplishment or achievement. Why do you think he shouldn't run?" I saw it with some of the people when I was on the debate, which, by the way, the polls all said I won the debate. Can you believe it? You know, if you listen... And my questions were slightly harder than everybody else's. Do we agree? Okay? A little bit hard. But, but, you know, I've, I've seen, some of the things I've seen in the political circuit, it really does take a certain amount of courage. And when I made that decision, that final decision, I'll tell you, it went right up to the wire. I just took a deep breath. I said, "Here we go." And I said, "Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna make our country great. I'm running for president." And I just said, "Oh, I've done it." Because I wanna make it. I wanna do something so special. And you know, as, as well as I've done in business and all of that, it's so much, this is so much more important, what I'm doing now. It's just so much more. I'm building buildings, and they're wonderful and great. I'm building one on, think of this one. I'm building one on Pennsylvania Avenue, right next to the White House, between the White House and Congress, the old post office, okay? It's great. It's, by the way, under budget and ahead of schedule. Is that nice? Wouldn't that be, right? It'll open far ahead of schedule, under budget. It'll be one of the great hotels of the world. I love doing that. Doral in Miami, Turnberry in Scott. I mean, I do great stuff, the most iconic, but that's all, this is, this is so important. That won't even matter if our country falls apart. And our country's falling apart. And I just wanted to do this, and you mentioned wall. I mean, I will build the greatest wall that you've ever seen. And I would never do this myself, but I hope it's gonna be so, and it actually will even look great. I already know what it should look like. You know, the other day, the other day, they were saying, I was watching these characters, politicians that are running against me. "You can't get Mexico to pay for the wall." Of course you can. They can't, because they never would even think of... Do you know how much Mexico is making from the United States? That's peanuts, the wall. And then they say, "You can't build a wall. It's too big. It's too, it doesn't work." Well, 3,000 years ago, right? The Great Wall of China was built. We'd like to have that wall. That wall, nobody gets through. That I can tell you. And that's 13,000 miles, right? And that was done between 2,000... It'd take them 500 years, in all fairness. It was a pretty long time. They don't stop. They don't stop. That's why we need tough people to negotiate with the Chinese, because they don't stop. But the Great Wall of China was built, 13,000 miles. Now, in Mexico, they were complaining it doesn't work. Now, they have these walls built, and they said, "Well, people go over these walls with a ladder." You know how tall the wall is? It's like this. And it's not a wall. It's a little fence. And people put up a ladder that they buy at Home Depot, and they go over the wall, jump, and that's the other. And then they say, "I'm talking about a wall. See that ceiling up there? Higher." Did you ever see, okay, did you ever see precast plank for parking garages? Okay, as, as an example, you know, not a big deal. I'm a great builder. What I do best in life, in all fairness, I build. Which is good, because your infrastructure in this country is crumbling. Isn't it nice to have a builder? A real builder? So you take precast plank, it comes 30 feet long, 40 feet long, 50 feet long. You see the highways where they can span 50, 60 feet, even longer than that, right? And you do a beautiful, nice, precast plank with beautiful everything, just perfect. I want it to be so beautiful, because maybe someday, they're gonna call it the Trump Wall, maybe. So I have to make sure it's beautiful, right? I'll be very proud of that wall. If they call it the Trump Wall, it has to be beautiful. And you put that plank up, and you dig your footings, and you put that plank up, there's no ladder going over that. If they ever get up there, they're in trouble, because there's no way to get down. Maybe a rope. But, and then somebody said, "Oh, well, they'll build tunnels." Well, you can't build a tunnel, because with X-ray equipment, you can see if they're building a tunnel. You can't build a tunnel. Yeah, you could try, but if you have people, you know... Now, we have to build the wall. We have to get the bad people out. The immigration policy, I've gotten great, I'll tell you what. I've gotten tremendous applause for what we submitted yesterday on immigration. Tremendous applause. And support. And you know, a lot of the illegals, if you look at Chicago with the gangs, you see the gangs. And I have property in Chicago. Chicago's a great city in many ways, but it's, you know, getting really hurt. But you look at Chicago, you look at Baltimore, you look at Ferguson, you look at a lot of these places, a lot of these gangs, and the most vicious are illegals. They, they're out of here. First day, I will send in people, wheat, wheat. Those guys are out of here. They're out of here. You know? They talk about guns. I'm a big Second Amendment person. I believe so strongly. Big. But they talk about guns, and you look at Chicago. Do you know that Chicago has the toughest gun laws in the United States by far? And people getting shot with guns all over the place, okay? You need enforcement. You need lots of things. But you also have to get the bad people out, the people that aren't supposed to be here, and they're here illegally, and we're gonna get them out. We're gonna get them out so fast and so quick, and it's gonna be tough. It's not gonna be like, "Oh, please, would you come with us, please? Would you come, please, with us?" Because you know these law enforcement people, and I know the guys in Chicago. Your police commissioner's a great man. You, they can do it, if they're allowed to do it. I know the guys. New York, I know them. They're great. Bratton, great. Great commissioner. They can all do it. They can all do it. But they have to be allowed to do their job. They have to be allowed to do their job. So we're gonna make our, our country a really wonderful place. When, when I was criticized the other day by Hillary... When I was criticized the other day by Hillary... And also the same day, with the same word by Jeb. Same day, they said, "My tone, my tone." You know the word tone? Isn't nice? They didn't like my tone. They thought it was too strong. And I'm saying to myself, you know, we have crime all over the country. We have... The borders are... I mean, the southern border is a disaster, which, by the way, I turned out to be right. Remember the abuse I took? Rush Limbaugh said he has more incoming than any human being I've ever seen. And he didn't fold and sit down and apologize. I won't... I don't... I only apologize... I do apologize when I'm wrong. But I had... Rush said, used the word "incoming." Incoming, you know what that means, from these people right here, incoming. And then it turned out that I was right. And people started to see the violence and the crime. And they saw Kate in San Francisco, a magnificent person, whose family is a great family. And they saw Jamil. And they saw so many people killed violently and viciously. The other night, the woman, 66-year-old veteran, raped, sodomized, brutally killed by an illegal immigrant. We gotta stop... We gotta bring back our country. We gotta take it back. We gotta take it back. Okay. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Okay, go ahead. Yes, sir. Young man.
Hello, Mr. Trump.
Hi.
My name is Kayden. I wanted to know if being president is so hard, why do you want to be president?
Oh, that might be the best question I get all night. Great question. So if being president is so hard, why do I want to be president? Because I love this country, and I know that I can make it great again. I know it. For you, you know? And really, for you. These folks, they've seen it, but it's for you and people your age, because when they get to be our age, if we keep going the way we're going, it's gonna be a very unattractive picture. Yeah, uh, yes, sir, go ahead.
I, um, went on your... I was coming today, and I went on your website to see some of your policy positions, and the only thing there is immigration reform. So I was just wondering, can you speak to any of your other plans for policy?
Well, I did a big policy position on immigration, and I think most people really like it. Certainly, it seems that it's been very popular. We're going to be doing a lot of policy positions, and, you know, I say this, and I mean it. When I want a deal, I don't sit down and say, "Well, let's see, I'm gonna give 14 points." You know, the press... I actually think the press... Are you a member of the press? I actually think... I actually think the press wants policy, you know, the so-called policy positions more than the people, if you want to know the truth. Because when I sit down, and I really enjoyed, and I really feel we've hit something special with the immigration policy position, it's very formally done, done with a lot of people, including Senator Sessions, who's a terrific guy. Terrific guy. And... And... But, you know, when I do transactions, I've made a lot of great deals, I don't sit down and say, "Well, let's see, I'm gonna mark down 14 points. First thing I'm going to do is call somebody. Next thing I'm gonna do is get on an airplane." You know, it doesn't sort of work that way. You go in and you get it. Doral in Miami, everybody wanted it. I heard it might be available. I got on a plane, I went down, I scooped it up before anyone knew what the hell was going on. Does that make sense? We gotta, you know, we have to have flexibility. When you do 14 points, you know, the second point may change. And it may be much better than the second point you put down on the policy position. May be much better. And that will throw off the rest of the points. But they'll throw it off for the better. I'm doing the policy positions, and I'm doing tax papers. I want to put H&R Block out of business, because it's too complicated. No, it's too complicated. But when it comes to policy, I'm gonna give you wonderful policy positions, but I just want to tell you, the great people, and this is including politicians, of which there are very few, there are very few, but because they're only good at one thing, and that's getting reelected. And that's really all they care about, if you ask me. But it's really true. Are there any politicians in the room? Because there are, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about everyone else. But if you look at policy positions, we're gonna be putting out some very good ones, but you need flexibility. And if you don't have flexibility, you're not gonna make the great ones. I mean flexibility in the proper way. The proper way. As an example, I could give you policy on dealing with China. China is killing us. China has taken so much of our wealth. They've taken our jobs. They've taken our businesses. They've taken our manufacturing. The land? Let me think about that one. The way they're going, they'll have it pretty soon. But China has taken so much from us. And then think about it. We have rebuilt China. Somebody said to me, and I said, "Wow, that's a harsh statement." It's the greatest theft in the history of the United States. Now, I have great respect for China and their leaders. And I... Hey, look, the largest bank in the world is from China. They're a tenant of one of my buildings. I love China, I think it's great. But we don't have the people that know what they're doing. So we have lost... You can't just go say, "I want..." You go in, they just devalued their currency the other day. Two decades, the biggest they've ever had. They're killing us. You know what that is? They call it a sucking action. Every time you see them... You know what the sucking is? They're sucking the jobs and the money right out of our country. That's what they're doing. We've rebuilt China. You go in, not to mention the name George Washington Bridge, because I know that's a very ticklish name around here, but you go and you see the George Washington Bridge. They have many bridges that are bigger going up. They have bridges, they have roadways, they have airports. Other countries, same thing. And we're like a third world... Have you seen LaGuardia Airport recently? It's like a third-world airport. Kennedy Airport, like a third-world airport. LAX in Los Angeles, Newark Airport, all of them. We're like third world. They're taking our jobs, they're taking our money. And here's the beauty. We owe China $1.4 trillion. So think of it. This is like a magic act. They take our jobs, they take everything, and we owe them money. How does that happen? It's magic. It's magic. On their side, not on our side. That's not gonna happen with Donald Trump. That's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen when I tell the Karl icons and others like Karl, "Do me a favor. Take a look, because it's not gonna happen." And here's the funny part. We will have a better relationship with China, and a better relationship with Japan, and a better relationship with Mexico. We don't have a good relationship with Mexico, right? Do we have a good relationship? Remember Sergeant Tamarisi? Right? They kept him in jail. We couldn't get him in. We had a president that didn't even want to make a phone call. He was in that jail, rotting in that jail. And I helped him with Greta and some people, and I helped him financially, and finally, he got out. But he was in there so long. She was terrific. By the way, without her, you probably wouldn't even... He'd still be there. But... But they don't respect us. I would say, "Let him out. Let him out now." He will be out. He will be out. It's the messenger. No, it's the messenger. You know, I'll give you another example. I mean, if you look, our four prisoners. Now, I think a nuclear deal is very important, but we should have doubled and tripled up the sanctions and made a real deal, okay? Because I think having a deal is great, but we have to have a real deal. The worst thing we can do is a bad deal, and that's what we have, right? But we have four prisoners. Was three, now it's four. They added the reporter. But we had one in there because he's a Christian, he's a minister. Because he's a Christian, he's in jail. We don't have anybody even talking. So I say, "How do you make a deal without getting them out?" And before they even started, Kerry, who's a baby, I mean, here's a guy goes on a bicycle to go in a bicycle race. He's 73 years old, he's in a bicycle race. He falls, he breaks his leg during the negotiation. And I tell everybody, and you've probably heard it, I swear to you, I will never be in a bicycle race as long as I'm present. But you look at what's going on, and you look at a deal where we have these four people there. So you do, at the beginning, it shouldn't be now. By the way, now is inconceivable after what they got, that we don't even get these four guys out, is incredible. But at the beginning, they should have said, "Fellas, let the prisoners go. They're gonna help us all. You don't need them. Your people don't even know they're there. Let them out. It's good for us, good for you, good for the deal. Sets a good tone. Let them out. 95 percent sure I'll get them. If I don't, I walk. Because you know what? If they wouldn't do that, you're not gonna make a good deal." Now Kerry and President Obama, when they asked him about the prisoners, one of our reporters, where's our CBS reporter there that did such a good job? He was very brutal, but did a very good job. He asked a simple question, "What about the prisoners?" And what President Obama said, and what Kerry said, and Kerry said it like it was inconceivable. "I didn't want to bring it up because I didn't want to complicate the negotiations." Do you believe this? That was his answer. He didn't want to complicate it. Where do these people come from? You know, it's interesting. We're fighting against them in Yemen. I guess in theory, we're fighting against them in Syria. We're fighting all over the place. They don't want to talk about those things as part of the deal, because they don't want to complicate a deal. And then you get a deal signed, they're dancing in the streets of Iran, they're calling for the destruction of Israel and the destruction of the United States, and we're saying, "When do we sign?" I never saw anything like it. I've never seen anything... You know, I did write The Art of the Deal. Did anybody ever hear of The Art of the Deal? Good. Bring it up. Come on. Give me that book. Nice guy. Should I sign it? Give me that book. Come on, give me that book. See? Great. President Obama, Secretary Kerry, I highly think you should read this book quickly. Quickly! Quickly! Okay, man. Catch it? Thank... Ah, later. We'll do it later. So there's so much that can be done, there's so much potential. And the potential is the people. We have great people. We have amazing people. They just want to do it so badly. They want to do it so badly. Every time I go out, we have massive overflow crowds. Now, watch the press. So Bush had, I heard, 140, 150 people. We have 2,579 people. Many of them standing outside. They might have left now. I mean, you know, who the hell wants to listen to a loudspeaker, right? But we have way over... You know, that's the exact count. They'll probably say, "The crowds were about equal." "Oh, they were equal." But that's the way they are, very dishonest. But we've had an amazing, amazing time in New Hampshire, and it's just a special place. Go ahead, let's do two more. Two more questions. Make them good. If they're terrible questions, we'll do a third. Go ahead.
All right. Recently, we were fortunate to get the right amount of Republican representation in Washington.
Right.
And you know...
And they failed you.
And they failed. And, you know, I'm just wondering, what is it gonna take, or what are your thoughts on being able to get a little more unison with our groups of people there, the Republican representation, and get rid of some of the goofiness that's going on?
Well, it's really, you know, I mean, some people say terminus, but it really is something that was very sad to watch, because a lot of those people that failed to stand up were people that got elected because they were going to stand up. You're talking about certain Republican senators and congressmen, and they failed to stand up. It's almost like they get to Washington, and they're so impressed with everything, they don't want to do anything to shake things up. But I will tell you, the Republicans, in my opinion, had a great chance, a great chance to end Obamacare, a great chance. And they didn't do it. They didn't have the guts to stand up. And Ted Cruz and a few of the others did, by the way. But they didn't have the guts to stand up. And I thought it was a disgrace. I thought it was absolutely a disgrace. And what I think was so bad about, you know, as I say, the last thing we need is another Bush, that Justice Roberts could have easily and should have killed Obamacare the first time, and could have wounded it very badly the second time. And he was a friend of Jeb, and Jeb is the one, people don't know this, Jeb is the one that pushed him into that position, his brother's president. And they worked together. And Justice Roberts, because he wanted to be loved on the Beltway, because there was no way he could have made that decision. We're all smart people. We all like have good you-know-what. There was no way he could have made that decision. And Justice Roberts had two chances to kill Obamacare, but in particular, the first time. It would have been killed. The second time, it would have eventually withered away. Well, we're gonna get in there, and we're gonna get you really great coverage at much better pricing. So much can be done. But you gotta remember that. That was a Bush appointment, and how that happened was shocking to the world. Shocking to the world. And it was a wrong decision, by the way. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Trump.
Hi.
Thank you for coming out here. I am a mother of two service members, and I'm looking for a president who will boost the morale of our military, because I just feel like they've been really trampled on the last seven years. So I want to know if you're that president.
Well, you've got the right man. Believe me. I said before to the press, and I said before to a group of our great supporters, we have a group of 25 people that have been with me like from the beginning in New Hampshire, and I met with them backstage. And I will tell you, and I told them, we are gonna make our military so strong and so powerful and so incredible. We're gonna take care of our vets, by the way, as part of it. Bigly. But we're gonna make it so strong and so good that we won't have to use it. Nobody's gonna mess with us, folks. Nobody. Nobody. We're never gonna have to use it. And right now, we don't have that, unfortunately. All right, how about one or two more? Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Yes, sir, veteran. You do look like a veteran. You are a veteran, I hope.
34 years, huh?
Okay, good.
Listen, I was wondering, what are they gonna do about Hillary?
Now, she's... What are we gonna do about Hillary? She's got big problems, I don't know.
That's right. I want to see that woman in jail.
What is Hillary gonna do about Hillary?
I want to see that woman in jail. That's where she belongs. Her and Obama both. Obama can go with her.
Now I know he's a veteran.
She killed four people.
Now, she's got some...
In Benghazi.
She's got some...
And Obama killed a few himself by letting her go on to do it.
Right. Okay, one more. Go ahead.
Donald, Donald. How you doing, Donald? My name's Steve.
Where are you, Steve?
Right here.
Okay.
Very touchy subject to talk about at a debate like this, but as a lot of us here believe in faith in God, I wanted to find out where you stood, where this country was founded over 300 years ago by the Constitution of the pilgrims that came over here and founded America.
Right.
We were founded under God. There's a monument not too far from here that's like the largest storybook of how America was created under God.
Right.
It seems like in politics, for the last 300 years, we've been getting further and further away, church being removed from state.
I think that's right.
Showing our children that there is something to have hope for, and to eliminate all this crazy stuff in society, we need to get back under God, I think, is trying to get our country back. How do you feel about that?
Well, I agree with it. And you know, I don't know if you know, I'm Protestant, I'm Presbyterian, and I feel very strongly about what you said. And when you say 300 years, yes, but most of this horror show has taken place over the last 20 years, wouldn't you say? I mean, it's just, don't mention the word Christmas, and you can't do this, and you can't do that. It's out of control, and that will change with me. Believe me, I will be fighting. I will be fighting, and I will be winning, because I win. I win. I'm somebody that wins, and that'll change. And you know another thing that's gonna change? We are in very sad shape as a country, and we're more concerned about being politically correct than we are about victory, than we are about winning. And I think that's all fine, but we're not gonna be so politically correct anymore. We are going to get things done. We are going to make this country special. And you know, I say sometimes that the American dream is dead, but we're gonna make it bigger and better and stronger than ever before, and we're going to do that. And the bottom line is, we are going to make America great again, and I really love you people, and I really appreciate your support, and I want to thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.